All right. We are all here in our places with bright smiling faces, yes. It is four o'clock and we will call the workshop of the Curville City Council to order. Do we have any public speakers, shall we?
No, we have no one's on that.
All right, we will move right to the presentation on the Guadalupe River.
Just do a quick introduction, Mayor and Council. We've got two speakers here today, Mr. Nathan Pence and Mr. Chad Norris from the Guadalupe Blanco River Authority. They've been working on a habitat conservation plan for a number of years. City of Curville has been tracking on a number of species that we have been informed from national fish and wildlife agencies in regards to species that they're tracking on for Endangered Species Act. It's been hot and cold on the inclusion of those animals onto the Endangered Species Act for at least the last six plus years that I've been here. And so we've been tracking on that with private counsel. During that time, GBRA has really taken a leadership position and beginning to develop a habitat conservation plan, not only for this area, but for the entirety really of the basin. They've done habitat conservation plans for other species in the past. And so this is kind of a next iteration to that. So we wanted to be able to bring this item to you all for informational item to let you know about where they're at in the process and then also potential partnership opportunities that may present themselves in the very near future. So with that, we'd like to bring Mr. Nathan Pence up for the brief to City Council.
Good evening, Mr. Pence.
Madam Mayor, Council members, good to see you this afternoon. My name is Nathan Pence. I'm the Executive Manager of Environmental Science at the Guadalupe Blanco River Authority. Kind of a long mouthful, I feel like to just tell people I'm the science guy. I get to play with the species, make sure we have clean water, some of the fun stuff that go beyond pipes and sewage and things of that nature. Just to give you a little bit of knowledge about myself, I have been doing environmental endangered species work for the last 20 years or so. Worked for the city in New Braunfels at their Springs complexes there, did endangered species issues along with development and economic progress. The two are sometimes in conflict, but they don't have to be. And then I moved on from there to the Edwards Aquifer Authority where I worked on all the Edwards Aquifer issues and the recent HCP that they were able to get in place to help with San Antonio Water, Ag Water out West and the Springs. Just real quick, I want to make sure and mention Chad Norris is the Deputy Executive Manager of Environmental Science from GBRA. Chad and I have known each other for 20 years, worked on a lot of the same stuff. Chad has come to GBRA about a year ago from Texas Parks and Wildlife. And he was most definitely a Springs expert, species expert, landowner liaison there. So fits right in with some of the stuff that we're trying to do. So between the two of us, we may kind of jump back and forth if you guys have questions, but somewhere in the room, hopefully we've got the answer for you. Just jumping right into it, Mr. Hoppy gave a good introduction of some of the issues that are going on here. We're going to talk about endangered species, endangered species here locally in your backyard. On August of 2021, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service put into the Federal Register an intent to list as endangered three freshwater mussels. Two of those mussels are here in your local area. That was probably five years leading up to that point when they actually did that. Everyone suspected they were probably going to put that notice in the Federal Register of their intent to list them as endangered. Sure enough, they did. Freshwater mussels, I just wanted to mention to you, one of the reasons that they're making this list and that they're coming into attention right now is because they have a pretty complex life cycle. The way that it works is adult mussels will spawn on the bed of the river. They attract a fish some way or another, and they actually spit their larvae into the fish's mouth. They're called glaukidia. The freshwater mussel glaukidia, the little larval mussels attached to the gills of the fish feed on the blood that goes through the gills of the fish. They grow. At some point, they fall off of the fish when they've gotten big enough. They fall to the bottom of the river and they become a large adult mussel and then that cycle repeats. Because of this complex life cycle, there are many ways that they can be impacted. Hence their lower population numbers and the fact that they're going on to the endangered species or could go on to the endangered species list. If you impact the host fish, fish can't move, dams, weirs, dry spots, that affects the mussel because you've limited the mussel's ability to reproduce and move. The mussels themselves, water quality, sedimentation, disturbing the bottom. So that's the reason the mussels are on there is because of this complex life cycle that they go through and then how human impacts affect that life cycle. In your backyard right here, one of the species that's on the candidate list that was in that Federal Register is the Guadalupe fat muckit. That's a picture of it, you can see it in someone's hand there for reference to kind of give you the idea of the size. I'd say it's a pretty good representative picture of one. When U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service put out their Federal Register notice with intent to list, they also named critical habitat for the species. That critical habitat, if the proposal gets listed and it goes all the way through, that habitat would also become under the ESA critical habitat. I think the two things I'd like to mention to you about critical habitat is, one, it really only affects funding for federal projects. So if you wanted to do a federal project in critical habitat, you would have to jump through a whole bunch of extra hoops. If you don't have plans of using federal monies for anything, critical habitat probably doesn't mean as much to you. But what I see it as is kind of that signal from U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, what they think is the most important area for that species. That's my layman's term, kind of interpretation. But you'll see for the fat muckit that they list that critical habitat only in Kerr County in the north and south forks of the Guadalupe. So lucky you, it's here in your backyard, it's pretty much only found here in your backyard and fish is signaling that with this map that they've put out there. Second species that you have here is the Guadalupe orb. Again, great picture there of a representative example, a specimen of that species. Don't look a whole lot different from each other. I'll tell you, it takes a lot of training to be able to identify them and tell them apart, but they're very different. Where they live at in the river is different, the fish host that they have is different, the way they reproduce can be different. So even though they look very similar, don't let that fool you. One thing about the orb, just to kind of compare it back to the fat muckit, the orb is found places other than Kerr County in the Guadalupe River. So it's also found in the San Marcos River as it feeds into the Guadalupe. And then some of the Guadalupe River in the middle of the basin. I'll use Gonzalez just as a reference point, but down in that middle basin area, it's also found. But you'll notice again, there's critical habitat identified by U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service in Kerr County, meaning that there are important populations of that species. Even though it's found other places, there's important populations of that species here in Kerr County. Thought I'd show this real quick, just to kind of give you an idea of where we're at in this process. So the visual that you have or the graphic that you have is what U.S. Fish goes through when they're deciding to list a species. We are all the way around that if you move clockwise till probably about eight o'clock where it says public comment right there. So they have already issued their 12-month finding, which is supposed to start the clock moving, 12 months they have to make a decision. They put out their proposed rule that they intend to list, they're taking public comment. The final rule should come out last month and it hasn't. So the time is ticking, we expect it to come out, that decision at any time. I can't make promises, but what I'll tell you is if I was a gambling man and I was in Vegas, I would bet at least one of two of those species was listed that you have here locally. And if I get somebody to give me good odds, I'd put money on both of them getting listed too. They've gone through a lot of effort to get where they are right now. They feel pretty certain that they're going to list them when they get to this point. And the environmental groups, as you can imagine, there's watchdogs over every species, including mussels. And the environmental groups definitely believe it should be listed and are pressuring U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service that direction too. So now that you know you have endangered species here locally in Kerr County, it's not too tough. I tell folks, you kind of have one of two avenues or choices that you can go down. You can try to be real proactive, work with the framework that's under the Endangered Species Act, and there are options in the Endangered Species Act to help address local endangered species issues. I'll stay away from that one just yet, but there's ways to do that under the Endangered Species Act. The HCP acronym stands for Habitat Conservation Plan. And that is probably one of the most widely used mechanisms or tools in the ESA to account for endangered species in an ecosystem or a watershed. The second approach seems easier up till a point. You can do nothing and there are a lot of entities that choose to do nothing. The fear of that though is always tomorrow. Is someone going to decide to sue me tomorrow because I violated the Endangered Species Act? Or is someone going to choose to sue U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service because U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service hasn't enforced the Endangered Species Act on an entity like the city of Curville? Because it's usually U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service that initiates some sort of a compliance or enforcement action, if you will. So there are times that it makes sense to do nothing. I will tell you, I'll fast forward and hit a punchline, I do not believe that you're in that situation, but that's not my decision, right? That's, I'm going to try and give you some information so y'all can make that kind of decision. But it comes down to a risk benefit analysis. You know, what kind of impacts do you or your staff believe that you're causing as a city to those species? What is the benefit of participating? What does it cost to participate versus what does it cost to litigate? And I will tell y'all right now, in my experience, it is much cheaper to be proactive, spend that money on positive restoration, conservation, good image in the public, good image across the state versus spending all that money in court where you could lose at the end. And even if you win, you've spent more money and you're still vulnerable to future lawsuits, even though you may have won that one. One that I mentioned and it resonates with folks and it was a learning experience for GBRA, it was a learning experience for me, even though I wasn't at GBRA. The Aransas Project sued TCEQ claiming that TCEQ was not implementing the water permit system in Texas allowing too much water to be used. And essentially what it came down to was causing impacts to the hooping crane on the coast. GBRA litigated that on the side of the state and fought the Aransas Project and essentially said, we're not causing impacts to hooping cranes. We won that in the appellate court in New Orleans, the Fifth Circuit. Spent roughly, and I've heard different numbers, I wasn't at GBRA at the time and I've done some accounting, but somewhere between five and seven million dollars is what GBRA spent on that 10 years ago. Think about that in today's dollars. I'm not going to spend anywhere close to that amount of money getting an HCP together and it'll probably pay for my first 20, 25 years of implementation as well. So we did all that then, spent that money, and here we are back going to do this process again because, one, it is the right thing to do, it's good environmental stewardship, it's our role as a leader, but we're still vulnerable to lawsuits on endangered species issues because we didn't put something in place under the Endangered Species Act. So that's just one example.
Tell me again what HCP stands for?
Yes ma'am, that is a Habitat Conservation Plan. I want to make sure and say this, folks throw around the term conservation plan a bunch. A habitat conservation plan under the Endangered Species Act is not just a normal conservation plan. It's not the be all, catch all, solve every environmental issue. A habitat conservation plan is specific to a certain species and the impacts that you cause in offsetting those. So it's not, you know, there's a lot of people who hear that term Habitat Conservation Plan and they want to start throwing everything in the kitchen sink at it. I want to make sure and be upfront, this does not replace or offset other good conservation ideas, programs, plans that you may have here in the city. This one will be very specific to the freshwater mussels and potentially other species if y'all wish to decide to have the conversation about some other species. Oh, and I may have just kind of stolen my next slide a little bit. But under the Endangered Species Act, the tool is a Habitat Conservation Plan. What you're really seeking, what you want out of the government is an incidental take permit. That permit essentially says, as long as you're conducting lawful activities and you cause an impact to the species, you're covered under the Endangered Species Act. The Habitat Conservation Plan is a document that you write to get your incidental take permit. And the Habitat Conservation Plan first identifies all your impacts and quantifies them to the species. Then it lays out the positive things that you're going to do to offset those impacts. So essentially you have the things I do that cause impacts and then the things you're going to do to make up for them. That's all contained in the document that's a Habitat Conservation Plan. They use that to issue you an incidental take permit, yes ma'am?
Can you give like a real world example to a situation when you're talking about this allowance for a take of an endangered species, when that might actually play out?
Yeah, sure. So one of the things that I can think about, and it's a very easy example to follow, so with freshwater mussels, I'll try to keep it here local. If you're going through a time of drought where the river would normally be lower, mussels are going to feel an impact from that, whether it's because they become dry, you know, you lose wetted surface in the actual river so they dry out, or the water quality gets bad because there's low flows and drought. Mussels experience that normally, but then you're pumping from the river, your intake of raw water to serve your citizens is going to cause that river to go down even lower. So that delta is an impact that is caused by the city. You have to offset that under the Endangered Species Act and there's a lot of ways you can offset it. You can offset it by releasing more water or putting water into the river. You could offset it by making the habitat that's still wetted more optimum and perfect for the mussels that are able to survive so they can reproduce when the water comes back. There's different ways to offset it, but that would be an actual example that probably if you chose to go this route is not just an example, it'd probably become a real scenario.
So under this plan, perhaps that scenario would be a strategy the city would implement in the case of drought?
It would be. Typically with aquatic species, your time of concern is during drought. When there's plenty of water, things are usually good. It's when it gets to be crunch time, that's when humans want the water the most. It's also when the species need the water the most. So that's where those two things intersect and are in conflict.
So then if we come under some form of attack, we say, well, we have a plan and we recharge the river to make up for the negative impacts on the species?
I want to make sure a train doesn't leave the station and get away from us. I use an example of mitigation of putting some water back into the river. And that is a real option and can be, but I want to make sure that doesn't become the only focus because there's other things you can do. Because during that drought time, it's often hard to find enough water to mitigate that and make up for it.
So maybe a list of potential responses?
Yep, and you go through those strategies and figure out which one works best for that species in this area and that would go into the plan. Okay, I was just thinking, I was making sure I covered everything there that I wanted to mention. So the benefits of an HCP, I like to call this the lawyer slide in my presentation. If you guys can't tell, my personality is not a lawyer, that is not me. I prefer to have a good conversation, that sort of thing. But you want to do this under the Endangered Species Act because you do get very defined legal benefits. It goes down on black and white, it's on contract. It essentially can become a get out of jail free card when someone does challenge you like you were just talking about. So lawyers can explain all of this and there's tons of things in there. One of the things I'll mention from the legal side, once you sign on to that plan and U.S. Fish signs it too, there are no surprises clause means they can't change it on you. And I think that's one of the most important things from a legal standpoint. When you come to an agreement with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, you and they are locked into that. But the important part of that is you know what to count on for the next period of time when it comes to your water source here in the city. They can't come take more of it away from you, they can't require you to put it in a trust. You may volunteer to do that with a little bit, but they can't come get more from you at a later date until you have to renew that permit and then you can start negotiations over essentially. But the longer that period of time that you lock in, the better because there's no surprises or changes and you can plan for that. Even if it costs you an amount of money, you know what that amount of money is, you can plan for it into the future, you know what to expect. And so you can essentially, it becomes a line item type thing and you know what to expect.
So how does a plan relate to a permit?
Okay, the permit, the incidental take permit is the actual permit and authorization that you receive from the federal government, from U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. The Habitat Conservation Plan is the document you write to get that permit. And the Habitat Conservation Plan essentially lays out all those activities that you do that cause impact, then it'll tell them the positive things that you're going to do to offset that. So once you give them your HCP and you tell them, I admit I caused these impacts, but I'm going to do these things positively to make up for it, then what their job is is to issue you an incidental take permit so long as they agree with everything you've written in your HCP. And by golly, when you get to that point, you better know they're going to agree, you better have been talking to them and working with them. You don't submit it to them and hope, there's way too much effort that goes into that.
And these permits, are they a specific length of time? Are those part of the negotiated process?
They are, I have some slides on here, so, but let me just mention, so when you get a permit, it is for a specific amount of time. The longer amount of time, the better because you're locked in, you know what to expect. I use the word sustainability for your resources, which is water in this case. You're locked in, you know that. Our intent is to go for a 50-year permit. It is possible that U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, because of climate change impacts or some other uncertainties, may want to do a shorter term permit. I tell you, I would never consider in a negotiation anything less than 30 years. All the effort, the time and the money it's going to take, it's not worth it to go get a five-year permit out the end of that deal. It's going to take us five years to apply for the permit, so. Yeah, great question, ma'am. So here's my non-lawyer slide. The HCPs, they're an environmental insurance plan against ESA liabilities. Long story short, you do what's in that HCP, you achieve your incidental take permit and you get that. When someone comes knocking on your door, whether that's an environmental group, whether that's the federal government, whoever that is, you get to hold that Habitat Conservation Plan and that incidental take plan up. And it reminds me of Monopoly, your get out of jail free card, right? It doesn't mean that someone may not sue you because they can always file suit. But when you get to that first level of court and you show them that document and you show them you've been doing everything and you call U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to the stand to concur that you've been doing what you're supposed to, you're going to get out of it. Stability and regulatory assurances, you know, this is kind of what I was talking about earlier with your resources. You lock in that permit for a certain number of years, you're going to have to give something up to do that. I never want to mislead someone and sugarcoat it too much, but you're going to know what you have to give up, you're going to know what that cost is, you're going to know what that staff resource is, you're going to be able to plan for it in a city budget, you can look at it in your strategic plan for five or 20 years, however long your strategic plan is, you know, it's not an unknown. Someone can't take it from you, it doesn't change tomorrow. And the last bullet point kind of goes to the same thing. So from GBRA's perspective, we're looking at the entire basin. So I talked to y'all about a couple of mussels that are here local. Y'all probably have heard about the Golden Cheek Warbler before. The Monarch Butterfly has been making a lot of press here lately in the conservation efforts for the Monarch. Those are probably four species that I think you have here in your backyard. The rest of these are species that are somewhere else in the basin. GBRA has an interest, we're monitoring all of these because we do activities all up and down the basin. So knowing that these species on the screen right now are either listed already or are candidate species to be listed under the Endangered Species Act, GBRA made the decision to work on a Habitat Conservation Plan, to take advantage of those tools that are under the Endangered Species Act to mitigate for our take. I did mention, we learned this lesson some already, so as more and with the hooping crane. So as more and more species are getting added to the list and more and more species are becoming candidates, it seemed very logical for GBRA to go down this path of getting a Habitat Conservation Plan resulting in an incidental take permit. The reasons we did it is no different than the reasons I've talked to y'all about. Sustainability, it's cheaper than litigation and we want to be able to look at every one of our customers, whether that's a retail customer at their house or whether that's a wholesale customer like a municipality or another utility, we want to be able to look at them and say, for the next 50 years, we know we have the water that we've told you we're going to sell you. No one can come take it from us, we know what it's going to cost us, you know what it's going to cost us, you know what it's going to cost you. And we will have that water to provide to you because we have these assurances of no surprises. So the reasons we do it would be the same as y'all. The one little bit of a nuance that we talked about at GBRA, we could have gone and got a GBRA Habitat Conservation Plan. We made the conscious choice not to do that. We wanted to go get a Guadalupe River Habitat Conservation Plan, which gives me the ability to stand here and talk to like y'all and give you the option, not mandatory, not pushing, it's an option. It gives the option for others to join our plan too and receive that same take protection. There are savings in economy of scale. We already have a contracting team on board and I'm getting a little ahead of myself, but we embarked on this plan and this process for the same reasons that you guys would consider doing it. I will tell you a little progress that we've made to bring you up to speed where we're at and then I'll talk very specifically about how Curville can get involved in the process, how you've already been involved in the process and how you can more formally get involved if you'd like to. We did go to our board in 2019, asked them for support, asked them to direct us to work on this plan. We told them we intended for it not to be just GBRA, but we wanted to be a stewardship leader in the basin, so we wanted to make it available to others to participate. We got them to authorize us to go seek grant funding to help us do this. So it's not listed up there, but I have a consulting team that's coming on. The only reason I have a consulting team is because we were able to get a $1 million grant out of U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, out of the Department of the Interior to help fund our efforts. You guys, if you join us and want to work with us, y'all are getting to take advantage of that grant too essentially because it's paying the consulting team that's helping organize and put all of this together. My consulting team, local group called Blanton and Associates was my prime contractor. They're known for environmental work, road work, things of that nature. But they partnered with a team called ICF. ICF is a national firm, they are the HCP strategists. They do habitat conservation plans all over the country. The fact that we were able to get them on one of our teams is going to be very beneficial to GBRA, but I'll tell you, it's also going to be very beneficial to someone like the city of Curville that participates. Not a lot of entities and consultants do this kind of work. So to actually have a consultant on our team that I know has brought in entities like the city of Curville under an umbrella and created partnership agreements somewhere else and, I shouldn't say somewhere else, many other places in the country, that experience doesn't really exist very many places. So we were really lucky to get ICF on our team. Just to round it out, we've got a legal group from Lloyd Goslink, we've got water modelers from HDR, we've got muscle experts from BioWest, and I know I'm forgetting some. We have a facilitator, a public facilitator from UT, her name is Suzanne Schwartz, that's on the team too, and I'm probably forgetting somebody. But we've put together a very strong team to help us get across the finish line and that's where we're headed and we're going to make it there. We did form a technical advisory group, think of that as like a science committee or something like that, not going to go into detail here, but we want to be able to convince folks that we're doing objective science, we're doing the right thing. We're being leaders, we're being stewards and we're not doing it in a vacuum, we're being transparent about it too. And so this is one of the ways that we can get that information and that word out, plus take advantage of some free resources, they feed information back into us and do reviews. We have had a public stakeholder kickoff meeting. That meeting, probably the presentation didn't look too different than what I'm giving to y'all now. I will tell y'all, city of Curville was represented in that meeting, have been talking to some of your staff for several years now and they were, y'all were represented in that meeting. So taking notes and making sure y'all had a seat at the table. Second-party take is the mechanism that city of Curville or others would use to actually join our plan and I'm going to talk about that. I've got two slides left and that's all they're over is exactly how you guys get into the plan, so I'll come back to that and talk about it more. A few fundamental elements that we have established, their draft, they could change, but I'm going to call them established because it's what we're working with right now. The permit area is the entire watershed of the Guadalupe River, headwaters to tidewaters, that's not my phrase, that's been coined all over, you know, that sort of thing. That's not my phrase, that's been coined all over, you know, that sort of thing. Um, but it includes everything that drains into the Guadalupe River and a few extra areas. Kerr County is outside of GBRA's jurisdiction, wanna be, admit that upfront. HCPs do not have to follow political boundaries, species do not follow political or county boundaries or anything like that. And it's a voluntary process, it is not mandatory. So we can offer that, um, service or that, that, uh, that opportunity to others that are outside of our normal county jurisdictions. Duration, um, you asked that earlier, ma'am, we are seeking a 50-year permit, it is what we have landed on. There are some that are longer, there are some are shorter, but we think we can achieve that with all the pieces of the puzzle that we have. Covered species, that's the species we wanna protect. Essentially, that picture I showed earlier that had like 13 species on it, that's the species we're working with now. Some of them are very important to GBRA, some of them are very important to our partners that we think we're gonna end up working with. I think a great example is the golden cheek warbler. We're not quite as concerned about it probably as y'all might be. But it's in there, so you'd be able to take advantage of that. We don't have any intent of taking it out right now unless we get to the very end and no one needs that coverage, and then we would remove it from our plan. We've started talking about covered activities, so that's those impacts, the things we do that impact the species. Earlier, I used the example of water intake, raw water, that's a great example of a covered activity. Discharge of effluents on the flip side of the equation, but that would be a covered activity as well. And we have started talking about those positive things, those mitigation strategies that we see GBRA doing and potentially others doing to offset those impacts. That list of mitigation strategies can be like a brainstorming list. Just because it's the right thing for us to do in our area doesn't mean it'd be the right thing for you to do in your area based on the impact to the specific species that you actually cause. And we're talking about modeling already, the hydrologic modeling in an aquatic HCP is the most expensive piece. It's the piece that takes the longest, and it's the most complex piece. So we have engaged and started working on that, HDR consulting firm is on our team and they're doing that modeling for us. Um, they've got a lot of experience in the Guadalupe Basin, um, and definitely, um, they're good at that. So talking about how Curville would actually come into the fold, into the process, if y'all voluntarily chose that you wanted to. GBRA, there has to be a signatory on the permit, there's gotta be somebody that's on the hook. And we're taking that leadership role, and that would be GBRA in this case. GBRA would seek an incidental take permit from the federal government. And I gave an example earlier, I've worked on some other HCPs. In your actual permit, U.S. Fish will quantify the number of that species that you can take. And I wanna remind you, take is not causing death. Take can be disturbing, it can be changing their habitat, it can be disrupting their feeding patterns. It can be taking away their breeding grounds, the list goes on and on and on. So if you impact that species, if you change its life cycle, if you cause it to do something it wouldn't normally do, it's take. It doesn't have to be death, um, for it to constitute as take. So there'll be a number in that permit, depending on the species, it could be as small as three or four for something like a hooping crane. It could be in the hundreds of thousands to millions for something like a monarch or a small fish that there's many, many more of. Every year of that 50-year permit, GBRA will have to do a calculation for each species for how many were taken that year, that would include our take and anybody that came in under our permit. And you keep a running tally over 50 years, the end goal is you don't exceed the amount of take that's in that permit after 50 years. Would never let that happen, that's the management goal, right? You're watching that every year and doing the right things. But that's, that's how U.S. Fish measures compliance, plus are you doing the positive things you said you would do? Punchline, GBRA gets that permit, it's got an amount of take in it, but we can authorize that. We can share that with other entities, and that looks, um, very much like this diagram. It's, I didn't realize that was animated, that's kinda funny. But bring, brings up the kinda scenario that you see here. So under U.S. Fish's Endangered Species Act authority, you have GBRA who applied for an incidental take permit. Then you have an entity like the city of Curville that wants to receive second-party take through our permit. We work with you guys, we help quantify the amount of take that you would cause. We work with you on what your covered activities would be, will be very similar to ours probably. You'll have a couple that may be a little outliers from ours, but we do a lot of the similar things when it comes to water, and so you'd see those line up very much. And we would share that take protection with you, a contract becomes the mechanism. Now, one of the things that I've been talking to Mr. Hoppy about is how many folks do we think will come in under our plan? What does Curville look like at that table, essentially? Your voice get lost because there's too many, that sort of thing. My general manager asked me a couple of weeks ago what I thought success of this program would be. And I told him if we had five to eight entities like the city of Curville that signed up, that I thought that would be a very good success for up and down the basin. First off, there's not a lot of folks other than utilities, municipalities, and industries that actually cause the significant take that we're talking about where you'd wanna seek Endangered Species Act protection. So that limits you right there. There's gonna be some that don't wanna make the step, they don't wanna make the commitment to go through the ESA process. And so you'll even lose a, a few that made that first cut. And when you start coming down to the brass tacks, you can almost sit down and list the entities that would be interested and have a reason for wanting to go through this process. And I did that with Mr. Hoppy a little bit earlier and assured him, five to eight, that's about the max. If there was 10, I would be very surprised. So when the table gets sit and folks are having this conversation and there's a permit blanket that everyone's sharing, um, that gives you an idea of how many seats would be at the table probably. GBRA is on the hook to U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, but you're not gonna be one of 100 or one of 500 in a room. Um, it's gonna be a much smaller group working together. Kinda bringing you up to speed on where I'm at with speaking with Stuart and Mr. Hoppy, I'm working through it. A contract is how you formalize that relationship in this graphic between GBRA and city of Curville. Um, you guys do contracts all the time, right? Certificate of Inclusion is a specific type of contract that's named and identified and described under the Endangered Species Act. I'd say probably 90% of the relationships that I'm talking about right now are established through a certificate of inclusion type of a contract. It doesn't have to be a certificate of inclusion, there may be some reasons to look at other types of contracts, but it's probably would go that route, although I never, never wanna say has to be or can't be or must be type things. Um, so we're having informal conversations with city of Curville over the last couple of years. I'd say this presentation to council takes it kinda from the informal level to the formal level, most definitely. And so the next thing that I would do, if I get a signal from y'all's staff that there's an interest and wanna go to a next step, we have an information packet, a questionnaire that we essentially would send out. That questionnaire asks your staff to identify the things you think you do that cause an impact. Some of them are gonna be obvious to your staff, they're gonna know, some others they'll have to think about a little bit more. And then on the flip side, it'll ask, what do you think you could do to help offset those impacts? Long story short, this is kind of a litmus test, if you will. Folks that don't cause take, don't need to be in the program and in the plan. If they're not willing to do what it takes to mitigate, shouldn't be at the table in one of those chairs. And so this is kinda that litmus test to get over that hump and make sure both entities are serious about what's gonna happen. And then late winter, early next year, when the calendar year flips, we're gonna hold a work group. That work group will be invite-only, it will be folks who have got entity, I shouldn't say folks, I'm sorry. Entities that have gone through that vetting process, decide they wanna be at the table, we decide we want them at the table. Um, and we'll have a work group. That work group is where some of the sausage will start being made. So I imagine you'll have some questions for me in a little while that I won't be able to answer. And what I'm gonna say is the work group is gonna help establish those terms, help establish that path. You'll be a part of that work group if you so choose to be, and you'll be at that table. So you'll be a part of that decision-making process. Mention that, um, if you get this far through the process, if you decide when you wanna go this far, I have some extra free board in my contract with my consultants that's available to help entities like the city of Curville establish and quantify, that quantifies the hard part, the impact to species here locally. So we have some resources to help you do that so that you don't have to actually expend your own funds. Probably looking at staff time mostly in that piece of the process. Um, we can help you identify locations, types, the magnitude, help quantify it. Um, so we can bring something to the table to help you guys out too. One of the things I wanted to mention is, when it comes to the offset, when it comes to the mitigation, the positive things that you're going to do, um, it would be specific to the impact you cause. So if you end up joining our plan and another entity B joins our plan too, what entity B does does not impact your take or what you have to do to offset that take. So I get that question sometimes, wanna make sure five entities come together. We don't add everybody's impacts together and then divide that pie by five. Some are gonna cause more just because of the nature of their activities or the size of the entity, some are gonna cause less. Some are gonna cause it to all species, some one species, some five species. Well, if you don't affect the hooping crane, you should not be expected to pay for mitigation or to contribute staff resource that goes to mitigation of a hooping crane. So when you ask me later what the exact cost is going to be, I can't answer that yet because we haven't quantified the amount of your impacts to which species, nor have we talked to U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service yet about what it will, would need to be achieved to zero out that offset and cover all the impacts. So there's gonna be a couple of questions that admittedly I will not be able to answer for you just yet. But I would envision anything positive you do that offset, it's gonna be here in your backyard. You're not gonna be contributing money or staff resource that's going to go to Victoria and do some project in Victoria. Your impact is here locally, therefore the positive things, the mitigation you do will need to be here locally as well for that offset to benefit the species where you cause the impact. Um, so I get that question sometimes, I only paint a bunch of money into a hopper and then it goes down to the coast. Or guys on the coast say the same thing, I don't wanna pay a bunch of money into the hopper and then it goes back up, um, to the upper basin. So, um, wanted to make sure and say that. And then the last point that I'll, I'll end on, if we enter into this relationship together, it is not me negotiating against you or you negotiating against me. Whether you participate or not, I'm gonna have to pay or contribute the same amount of resource to this plan to cover for my take as I would if you were not participating. If you participate, then your take gets added to that, and that's what you pay for. So there's no financial benefit to me for you to join, I'm not trying to get you to join so I have to pay less type of a thing. It's an option that I'm giving to you. If you take it, we become partners and we're working together and negotiating with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service for what they're gonna require from us. So I get that question a lot of times, well, the more people you get to join, Nate, that means the less that GBRA is gonna have to do, contribute with their staff or pay monetarily. That's not where this is going, that's not the kinda relationship that we're trying to set up. The amount that you contribute, whether that's direct dollars or in-kind staff time or staff work like mowing or restoration or things like that, um, that's based on the amount of take you cause, not what I cause or what I'm doing. So I always like to mention that because folks, you know, at the very beginning, it feels like, okay, we're gonna get a contract with GBRA. Alright, they're gonna try and stick it to us, we're gonna try and figure out how we can give the less in it, and it's not really about that. It's about what can we get U.S. Fish to agree to so that collectively, you don't have to do more than you're supposed to do and I don't have to do more than I'm supposed to do. So we're, we're in this together if we go down that road. And I think that was, that was. So I, I'll just mention, as I close, my email address is there. Obviously, I've been talking with your staff, you guys feel free to reach out to me if, if that's appropriate with the, uh, the processes and procedures y'all have as a council here in Curville, I'd be glad to work with you, talk to you. And then that last link goes to our actual website where we've started putting information about the habitat conservation plan up. So if you wanna go do a little reading on your own, um, there's enough to keep you busy there for the whole weekend, and I'm sure it'd be thrilling. So, Mr. Hoppy, with that, I'd be glad to, to answer any questions, sir.
Just one quick element, if you could comment on it. We were made aware, and I think you all were as well, that U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service was, uh, in Kerr County this summer uh, to do some survey work, uh, we assume for these species. So, uh, maybe just some comments on that in regards to what your anticipation of timeline is for them.
Yeah, so they've been working this area over hard, and Chad, please feel free to jump in with specifics. But long story short, they've done their homework, they know the species are up here, they have been up here looking. Um, they have staffed at U.S. Fish that work on nothing but freshwater mussels. Um, there are quite a few universities that have been helping U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. I didn't bring maps today, but I can throw maps up and I can show you right here in Kerr County where they're found, um, including in the city type thing. So, um, yeah, U.S. Fish is aware, they know they're here. Um, they know how rare they are, especially with the fat muck, like I showed, the only place it's found is in Kerr County. Yeah, they're, they're very aware and they're very in tune with that, sir.
Is there any tourist opportunity there? I mean, everybody gathered up to see?
I never say never, I've already told you that. And I do, I do believe that there can be economic process, uh, progress, even where there are endangered species. San Antonio, the work I did there was a great example of that. Still use the aquifer as a water resource even though it supports and sustains so many endangered species. It's no different for the Guadalupe River. ESA habitat conservation plans, their design is to not stop development, stop progress, stop economics. It's actually to facilitate the two together, to allow the resources to still exist while city gets to do its normal business that it does on a daily basis. That's the whole purpose of an HCP.
When you're talking about like development, new development coming in, I, 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 I know almost nothing about this process, so, um, um, let's say that we have, you know, a certain species of, of tree that triggers us having to do a study of the golden cheek warbler or the person that's wanting to develop that. So if we're looking at something in development along the river, does anything about what a potential developer would have to do relate to what you're doing now? Like to lessen their load, or do we have to report new develop? How do those, how do those things work together?
The honest truth, ma'am, is it depends. You can choose to get super, super detailed about that in a habitat conservation plan, requiring your developers to buy offset credits, mitigation banks, things of that nature. Or you can choose not to include that in your habitat conservation plan, focus only on the water aquatic species like the mussels that I just mentioned. Different communities approach it differently because of, uh, because of politics and desires of the development community or desires of the city hall staff. So you, you can get that far, or you can not get that far, and it's, um, it's case-by-case basis.
There's no, there's no direction coming from your, your group.
We're not mandating it or, or saying it's not an option or you have to either or. We do have Dr. Golden Cheek Warbler on the list. The reason we put it there is because we wanted to make sure there was opportunities if those conversations were gonna take place. So we're keeping that species on the list in case you wanna have a conversation about if we're gonna clearcut this next to the river or something like that, and then we have the ability to have that conversation and potentially cover it.
There's really a number of, uh, take components, uh, for our community. Some are related to existing services being provided, uh, for instance, municipal water use, right? And the water rights that we have within, uh, the Guadalupe River for surface water rights. Uh, but there's also components, uh, like recreation, right? Uh, and the potential for recreation to disturb breeding beds, other things. Um, it, those are the aquatic pieces, there's other take components to that. Uh, but we mentioned golden cheek warbler, uh, and, uh, you know, the potential for old growth cedar to be removed in areas where development could potentially, uh, occur based off the community's vision for that growth. And so that could be a policy item that the council wants to weigh in on. And so, uh, we won't know until we get further down the road, and there'll be some policy directive that we're gonna need from council, uh, if, if we embark in that. Um, but those are all, they're, they're really, um, they could be as, as comprehensive as you want them or as narrow as you want them.
Mr. Hoppy, just to add to that, sir, you know, we talked earlier about parks. So mentioning recreation, the actual activity of recreation could be one thing. But then how you maintain your parks could either be an activity that causes an impact, or it could also be one of those positive offsets depending on how you do it that benefits a species. So I know parks and park lands, um, along the river are usually So I know parks and park lands along the river are usually a component on one side of the equation or the other, depending on how those parks are managed and what activities take place in them.
And we have a number of offsets that we're already doing. We try to take really good care of the river, as you well know, both from a drinking water standard as well as, it's a beautiful asset and it does host wildlife. And so, we do a number of things as a municipal entity, and we partner with folks like UGRA, Tara's in the Room, and others that help us protect the river. And so we're hopeful that U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service will help give us some credit for some of those things we're already doing. But again, it's all part of that negotiation that you put into that plan. So, no action from council today, really just wanted, we know this a lot, to kind of throw at you, but given where we're at in the timeline and where GBRA is at in the timeline, we did want to begin to brief you guys and get you up to speed. At least where things are at right now, particularly with the trajectory of where we think U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service is going here in the near future. And so, wanted to get out ahead of you and obviously bring the experts in to be able to speak to you about where they're at in the process and the potential for partnership.
Council, any, some questions, other questions?
I don't know anything about this, but you, you keep talking about a 50-year permit.
That would be our goal, yes, ma'am.
Who decides when a species is no longer endangered? And what is the reproductive cycle of these mussels? When can we look at them not being endangered anymore?
Well, the easy answer for the first part of your question is U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has a very similar process for delisting a species or downlisting a species as it does for listing a species. So it's based on science, it goes through a federal register notice, there's time for public comment. And there are some examples of species around the nation that have gone off the list that were on it at one point or the other. Not a lot of them, but there are a few.
So once they're on, they're kind of on?
I didn't say that, but I did.
That's what I was afraid of.
Yeah, please do, Chad, yes.
Once a species is listed, there is a cycle, a five-year review cycle, where they revisit that species and look at it and sort of assess whether or not it still needs to be on the list or if they want to propose it for downlisting or delisting. So it is on a cycle of five years. Now, I will say, it's the federal government and there's some species that it's been 15 years since they've had their five-year review. So sometimes it's up to the applicants and those that are involved with those species to kind of prod them into moving forward with those reviews.
Can you tell me a species that has come off the endangered species list?
Golden, the eagle is one.
The black-capped vireo was downlisted recently.
Which is an Austin species.
Had very similar.
They're recording it in the back, just so they can.
I apologize. The black-capped vireo is one that was listed around the same time as the golden-cheeked warbler and had very similar requirements. I believe five, five to 10 years ago, it was downlisted. So it happens, but, you know, sometimes it's about the reasons why a species is on the list. For instance, the species in the Edwards Aquifer in Comal and San Marcos Springs. There is no shortage of fountain darters, but they're only found in those two spring systems. So there's really never, you can never really overcome that. Even though there's millions of them, they're so restricted that they're probably very unlikely to ever come off the list.
And these are pretty restricted to Kerr County?
Well, one of them's more spread out across the basin. The fat mucket, though, is found only in Kerr County. And it's found in many spots in Kerr County, so I won't make it sound like it's only found in City Park or it's only found, but it's, Kerr County in the global scheme of things is not a large, a large habitat. And then, just for your benefit, ma'am, I put back up on the screen, but you can see after it goes through that listing process, you get up there until about 11 o'clock. After the final rule to list, there's that little box that says five-year status review, and that's exactly what Chad was talking about, that's where that occurs. And they're getting a little better about it, but there are definitely, like Chad said, some that just have not found their way back into that process.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Joe, questions?
My question's for Mr. Hoppy. You said our exposure basically is for the water treatment plant and some of the parks.
At a minimum, yes, sir.
our goal, our mission here, doesn't really include the protection of the river as much as another organization within our county. And I'm wondering why this presentation's being made to us and not to the Board of the UGRA.
So, there's some legal elements to that, and Mike certainly chime in here, I guess he exited the room. There's some legal standing components that really U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service are the ones that, and those administrative judges determine who has legal standing as far as they take.
This is a river authority, they're a river authority, what's the problem?
Yeah, Mike could certainly speak to that a little bit better than I can.
Even if it was just the city of Kerrville, it ends at the ETJ. If the thing is up in the South Fork and the North Fork, that's Tara's problem, that's not our problem.
That's right, and we're able to control what we're able to control, and I think what is probably going to end up indicating is that we have these endangered species within our city limits and within our water aquatic area within the city of Kerrville.
But if their, if their mission is the protection of the Guadalupe, the upper Guadalupe River, why aren't they running with the ball? Why are, why are you here? That's what I'm trying to.
Well, directly, I'm here because Mr. Hoppy asked me to, but, sir. Yeah, I don't mind telling you, I've given presentations to UGRA similar to this, to their staff and to their board. When I first engaged UGRA, sir, I thought they caused take, like what we're talking about, the city of Kerrville potentially causing.
I don't care about the differences between the river authorities, I don't care. What I do care about is, our mission is not the river, their mission is the river. Why aren't they involved? And if, and if there's some kind of bureaucratic mess, I don't care about it, but I don't know why you're here.
I might, let me, can I answer some of that?
Sure.
So, the reason that we're here today is because we have more of an impact on the river. We're actually taking water out of the river that's going to cause a direct, could direct influence of these mussels. We're also putting wastewater back into the river, and if we don't clean it to the proper standards, then that's going, that's going to be on us, though. UGRA doesn't do those practices up here in, in this, up in Kerr County.
I remember the tour.
GBRA does, they have some of the similar type processes that they do down in the southern portion of the Guadalupe River. But that's why it's apples to apples and why we're here today to say, the things that we do with the river, taking water out, putting stormwater in, all of those things can have a big impact on, on these mussels. And therefore, we're more, in my opinion, vulnerable for people to come and pursue us for having an adverse effect to these mussels.
Well, the thing is, organizations always run into trouble when they lose focus on their mission. And I understand we're a water supplier, we're a water company, I get it. But we're not a river authority.
Yes, sir.
Kim, any further questions?
So, not really, but, but just to, to ping off of what was said, the direct threat would be, the most direct threat to us would be the, the loss of water, that we could lose some of our capacity to pull out from. I, I guess I don't, I guess I don't really understand this yet.
So it's a big, so there's a bunch of different things, and that's, you know, it's a whole, all, we're trying to encapsulate what all we may get sued for in the future, right? If we build a new road across the river and we have to dredge it out, or we take some, or we kill some of the endangered species, and somebody can prove that, then they can sue the city and say, hey, you didn't adequately provide that alternative habitat, or you've done something to take a endangered species. If we dredge the river up there where our intake is, if we clean all the mud out of it or whatever, we let the, we empty our dam and that causes a portion of the river to dry up. There's all kinds of different reasons that can impact these endangered species. And what we're trying to do is implement a plan that says, if we do one of these, if we do one of these scenarios, if we decide, hey, we want to dredge out our intake structure, or we want to empty our pond, what, what do we have to do or what can we do to not be threatened by lawsuit for doing that, that process? Is that, is that accurate?
The only thing I would add to that is, your vulnerability or liability from that lawsuit can take many forms if you lose that lawsuit. Your settlement or your judgment could be water. It could be monetary per the number of species that was estimated that was killed during that bridge project, X amount for each mussel. Or it could be a settlement and a commitment to go back and make things different or restore things. So, water could be one of those things, but I want to make sure that it's understood that, you know, just like every lawsuit, no matter what it's about, the outcome, it can be a settlement, it can be a judgment, and it can take a lot of different forms as far as magnitude or the actual media or the format of it, so.
And they really do happen, so the whooping crane thing happened was about five or eight years ago?
It was about 10, yes.
Same type of event, didn't let enough fresh water to get down to the estuaries to grow the shrimp, to feed the whooping crane. Whooping cranes died and people got sued that they allowed the whooping cranes to die. And every, just, they stacked up just about everybody they could and put them in the lawsuit and let the court settle it out. So that's what we're trying to get at. Including us, apparently.
We were part of that?
Yeah.
We, he mentioned the law firm Lloyd Goslink, and we used them as part of that process. And I can get you some more information about that.
Didn't know that.
Roman, questions?
I just heard multiple times, thank you for speaking, by the way. I've heard multiple times from you saying that if you get direction from our staff and, you know, we'll move forward XYZ. So to staff, what do you, I mean, there's been no, there's no action contemplated for tonight. But what do y'all need from us, or are y'all just going to move forward with this? What are we looking at here?
Well, we realize it's a lot of information. And so, really today, we wanted y'all to just be able to begin to digest this issue, understand that it is an issue that is coming to a theater near us soon, right? And so, you know, we're going to need to make some decisions on it going forward. We want to better understand, you know, really what some of those agreements might look like as well. And we'll be able to bring those to council, obviously, for authorization at a later date. But at this point, just digestion and questions and, and, you know, really, the passive avenue are do nothing, right? Move forward on our own or with a group of local partners, which could be very expensive and time-consuming. Or jump on a train that's already been moving for two or three years and is already half-funded, right? So, that's it essentially in a nutshell. But we understand it's very complicated and there's a lot of moving parts to this. And so, all we wanted to do today was introduce it to you and give you the chance to begin to digest it and then come back to us with any questions you may have.
Okay.
Yes, I think we need more time and, and a chance to talk. I am curious, if the mussels went away, I mean, I know they're endangered, so I understand all of that.
Not yet, not yet.
They're a candidate for listing as endangered.
If they were gone, would it affect? What would it affect?
By gone, do you mean all dead?
Yes, if they were extinct, I mean, what, what would be affected? Fish, do fish feed on them? I'm.
I would, my answer and Chad, I'll defer, so get ready, but they're one of those critical things like a canary in a coal mine, if you will. Mussels are a big indicator of the overall health of the ecosystem. They are filter feeders first, so a lot of the water clarity and the water quality and conditions that you have, you don't realize it, but they're just natural filterers out there, giving you that pretty clean water that you have up here. And then when mussels start to die from bad water quality, you can bet they weren't the first and they're not going to be the last. So that indicator species like the canary in the coal mine. So that, that's not a legal answer, that's kind of a biological or ecosystem type answer.
That's, that's what I wanted.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And then the fish and the tarpon, and it just cascades, I imagine. Are there any good recipes for fat muck?
Don't take them!
No, but if we can find one for zebra mussels, that's a muscle that we should be talking about removing and eating, so. I'm willing to talk to you, sir.
We'll have to mitigate you. Thank you for being here. Yeah, and just a question for EA, do you anticipate a lot of staff resource time to this if we wind up becoming a partner here in this?
You know, I think less than if we're a primary partner, right? And having to really kind of go out on our own. You know, we've spent a pretty good amount of staff time already tracking on this over the last six years that I've been aware of. I know Public Works and obviously Legal have been tracking it for quite a bit of time. But, you know, I think there's a lot of, in the staff development process, and Mr. Penn, please join in here, but I think in that initial HCP development process, obviously, that, that's the most time-intensive for staff. Just because they simply need to have an understanding of what our legal take is and also the policy direction on how broad you want that plan to be, right? How comprehensive do we want the golden-cheeked warbler in? Do we not really care about that? We're going to focus just on the, the mussels, right? And so those components, and so, yeah, it's going to take a little bit of time. But we certainly welcome the opportunity for partnership, because that always, more, more hands helps lift a heavy load, right?
Great question. I alluded to it in my presentation, but I didn't spell it out. So allow me to say, we're probably two years into a five-year process. We think that's how long it will take us to pull all the information together, do all the modeling, negotiate with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and submit our permit application along with our HCP. So for the next three years, I can envision your staff talking to me once a month, running contracts and documents back and forth, that sort of thing. And in my opinion, that'd probably be the most intense period, would be over the next three years or so. Once we get the permit, then we go into implementation. So the positive things you said you were going to do in that document, you would have to do, but that almost becomes like routine maintenance. You look at it, you know what you got to do each year. I don't have to come up here into your area and do it for you, you're going to do it for yourself, pay for it, however that works out. And then, you know, your two, three, four years in implementation, and it's just normal business practice at that point. So it's, it'd be a little more intense upfront, even though I don't want to make it sound like I get your whole staff all the time, no matter what, you know, that sort of thing. But really, once we get that permit, it just becomes maintenance, whatever that is. Whether you've agreed to mow, not to mow, if there's water that doesn't take effort, you release it or you store it, whatever it is. And so, the plans that I've been involved with and the other ones I see, you know, once you get that permit, it almost just becomes, it's, it's business practice. It's what you do, your staff does, or you put it in a line item as a budget and you hire someone to do it type thing, so.
You had mentioned five or six other partners. Can you share who those, who are potential?
I think what I can share with you at this point is to let you know that there are other utilities and municipalities up and down the basin that have water intakes and effluent discharges. It's not hard to sit down, but I would hate to commit to them something in public when I haven't asked them if I could do so. The, the second part of that, I would answer that, ma'am, is that invite-only work group, that's where the sausage gets made. Those entities would be at the table along with y'all if y'all chose to participate. And you would, you would get firsthand contact and communication with them as well. So you'd know what I told them and they'd know what I told you.
All right. All right, well, thank you again for being here.
Thank you very much.
A whole new world for us. So, all right, council, at this time, I believe we are going to, going to executive session. Would someone like to make that motion, please?
I'll move that we go into executive session for item 3A, section 551.071, 551.087, and then for 3B, 551.071.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
And all in favor, please raise your right hand. And we will adjourn into executive session at 5:08.